The Planning Board of Walderboro, May, already May, eighth, 2019. We have a quorum. We have Ted, Barbara, myself, Jim Russo, and new member, John Cosnow, and we have Max, and town planner, and Susan, our trustee secretary. I'll start off by saying, John, normally, we would like get some mutual introductions, as John is a new member tonight, but given all the things that we have to review, we will postpone that till after the reviews, or the next time, if you don't mind. Okay, so, are there any adjustments to the agenda that we're aware of? Hearing none. Are there any citizen comments not associated with any of the applications that we're talking about tonight? Okay, fine, just to make sure. So, under new business, we have four site plan reviews, and we will start with the permanent pier for 289 Spruce Lane. The applicant's okay.
All right. You can do it from here, or do you want me to ...
You could stand. I will hear you better if you're on my left and over there.
Good evening. I'm Will Gartley. We're Gartley and Dorsky, professional engineer in Camden, and I'm here representing the Freeland Heisens for their pier. It's proposed to be a 166-foot permanent wooden structure, supported by three granite cribs that extend out. The last granite crib is just before low water, and then there's a 50-foot gangway down to a 16-by-26 foot float. The gangway and float will be seasonal. The wood structure is going to be blue laminated beams, and again, it's supported by granite. There's an existing set of stairs at the location where we're starting the pier now, so we're going to replace those stairs with a new set of stairs that come down onto the pier, and then from the pier, a small set of stairs that go down to the beach. We've submitted our permit applications to the DEP and the Army Corps, and received both of those permits. In the photos I sent around the plan, you can see the remnants of old stone cribs. Historically, there had been up here at this location, and one of our granite cribs is going to be where the stone cribs were, and then the outermost crib is at the outermost portion of that old stone pile.
Did the old one extend the same length, or is it ...
Well, pretty much. If you look at the plan, that last pile of stones is about where we're ending now.
Okay.
So I'm assuming it went to low water. In fact, I think we have a photo that ...
Yeah, I think it's in the ...
And I think we submitted, well, we'll showcase what was charged.
Yeah, it's just a little hard to gauge from that how long it was.
Yeah, and the photo happened to be taken at high water, so it doesn't give us the reference that you might have, that photo had been at low water. But you can see that there were four actual cribs supporting that one.
I was quite impressed with how you explained the topography. Nice job.
Well, thank you. We actually sent a survey crew out there. I mean, on this one, it was very critical for us to know where low water was, and how much water we would have, trying to make sure that the float didn't bottom out any more than it had to, but that we didn't go out any further than we needed to either.
So, at that point in the river, the channel is on that side. The main channel of the river is on that side, and that is a point out there. Do you know what the distance is from the float to the edge of the channel?
I don't. Do you guys ...
It's really not that close. You get the green marker that's a good half, quarter mile off that, and that's really the turning point to come into. It's not that close to there, to where this is.
Well done. Thank you, John.
Well, the other thing I can tell you is the float, at the float, at low water, we have about a foot, foot and a half of water. So, there's got to be some distance there.
Oh, yeah.
Timing's everything.
Yeah.
Well, they know all about that.
Yeah, I can imagine.
So, that's something, as far as being near channels, that's something the state would be reviewing anyway, before it gave approval, right?
Right. The Army Corps is the one that looks at the navigable issues more than the DEP, but the Army Corps definitely looks at that.
Right. Well, and their approval letter says, if it turns out that there's a problem, they withhold the right to reverse their decision.
Jason, come on.
But I was curious. So I'm assuming that that was part of the analysis, but I was curious as to what that, whether we had a reason for that.
Let me ask you a question. Being a newbie here, this speech sounds kind of simplistic, but what would be the reason not to put that in? Does it affect the environment, or navigation, or is it an eyesore, or what? Why wouldn't ...
Why not follow here? I mean, there's definitely environmental issues at times. I mean, you know, I showed where there was salt-tolerant vegetation. We intentionally made sure that none of the structure was in that. That's something that the different agencies want us to do. If there was some sort of habitat there that was very special, or, I mean, luckily, this is, I mean, they picked this spot historically for a reason. There's an actual little ridge there. The contour is sure that there's a ridge there, and there's flats in both directions. But here, it's really sandy and light gravel. You can see in the photos that I submitted. So, this actually worked out really well. We weren't impacting any flats in doing this. So, those are the types of things that, in navigation ...
I was just going to comment for your benefit.
Yeah.
We are incredibly protective of clam flats in Walderboro.
Yes.
And I was looking very carefully at the topography to make sure we weren't influencing clam flats.
Right.
And it looks like we've skirted that issue nicely this time.
Okay. Well, and the other issue relative to the land use ordinance is you have to demonstrate that a temporary is not feasible.
Right.
And I didn't see anything describing the rationale of why temporary isn't feasible in there. So, could you outline that now, just for the record?
Yeah. I mean, with regards to temporary, you can see the size of the structure that it takes to even get out to low water.
Only 166.
Yeah. We do, we do a lot of temporary structures where we can attach to land or ledge, and you've got deep water relatively quickly. That's typically where we do temporary structures. This would network here.
Can you refresh my memory? When was, when was the dock, the previous dock last there?
All I can say is that my sister and I used to play on rams of it, and my grandfather put it in, and, and so, but he died quite young, and so my grandmother didn't really maintain a lot of, a lot of the waterfront where he was really, kind of did that. So, I'm just turned 65, so you can give you some idea of that.
A few decades ago.
Yeah. I mean, the house was built, I think the house was built in 1927, so it was put in then, and then, you know, after that.
So, back to Shellfish. Has the Shellfish Commission anything to say about it, or have they looked at it?
I sent a notice to, I gave a notice to Eileen, who forwarded to Glenn Melvin, and I have not heard anything.
I talked to Glenn last night on that very topic, and he thought the game was quite clear and simple. He didn't see any difficulties at all.
Yeah, good. Okay. It's not a flat. There are no, I mean, it's pretty rocky there.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah. Yep. Only other question I had, and we talked about it briefly before.
Another answer.
When I put mine in, 18, 17, 18 years ago, there was a square footage requirement of the pier, and the ramp, and the float, that you had to be under a certain level, or you wound up renting at the bottom from the state. Where does this stand regarding ...
Well, so we don't have any permanent structure that's out beyond mean-low water. So, if you, if you do have anything, so for mean-low water, out is lands of the state, so any permanent structure out there, you have to lease that land from the state. So, in this case, we stopped the permanent structure just prior to the low-water line. So, we don't have to do a submerged land lease.
So, the float gets pulled up? What happens to the float?
Yeah. So, the ramp and float get taken out seasonally.
Just kind of pulled from shore?
So, yeah, I mean, they actually have room around the corner here, where they've got a spot historically that they've done exactly that. They brought ...
Well, and some lobstermen, in fact.
Still do.
Pulled their floats up there in the winter time, so.
I assume you folks have a power boat.
Yeah.
We do.
Well, this warf, creating difficulties using that whenever you wish. Looks like you might be a little shallow there at mean-low tide.
I mean, we've been using power boats all along. It's going to make our lives a lot easier because we can hold ...
Fair enough. You've adapted before. You can do it again.
We're not getting in the awful dinghy and waiting two hours for the tide to come in.
I can see you've adapted. Good.
But you're correct. They won't be able to come in at dead-low water.
Right, right.
They'll have to, they'll have to wait a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're never used to that.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on this? I don't see any issue with the waiver list.
So, there's no, are there lights on the, on the dock or the ramp?
We, we're specing to have electricity down there, so we can have light on the top.
Yeah, well, we talked about low-level lights on the post that just go down onto the ...
Go down on the dock, on the walkway?
So that at nighttime, we can find our way back, and others who are on the water at night.
Okay.
Can avoid it, yes.
Good. Just no searchlight going across to Dutchneck, because it will aim right at me.
No searchlights.
Good.
There's a disco ball, though.
Only when there's a party.
Only on major holidays. Make a joke about it, but down on Beaver Road, there are a couple that shine right there. They're just bright as can be and shine across. They're a bit of an irritant, so.
Okay. We'll make sure that ...
But having a light on at a low level enough to potentially avoid wayward channel boaters in the evening, you know, we've certainly been, I've certainly been down there where you can't see more than 20 feet in the fog, so, good thing to have. Any other questions or comments?
I got, I got one. Are there any people around you, or neighbors, or people abutting, or who use the, is there anybody who's against this, who has an issue with it?
I can quickly field that.
Yeah.
So, as a requirement for anyone coming to the planning board, I have to send a notice, a letter, to anyone who's abutting. For this project specifically, there was only one abutting property owner.
Oh, and?
And then one other. I haven't heard anything.
I see.
Yeah, I can, I, he's, I cousin of mine. I think he's looking forward to our putting this here, so that he can use it as well.
But because it was in the shoreland, that's why I also sent one to the Shellfish Commission.
Okay.
Good question, though.
Yes.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions or comments? Max, do you have anything to add?
I did have to, because this is a shoreland issue, I did have to check to see if there was any disturbing historical or prehistoric sites. I checked, and the following was this. There's no shoreline, no Sheldon in here. There's nothing to worry about, so no argument for historic lines on this.
Okay. So, unless there's anything else, I'll call for a motion.
I move, we prove the application as indicated.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried.
You are free to go.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you.
Nice question and detail.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, Topsail Farm.
How's everybody? We are here, follow-up to a building in April, to request permission to add a 24-by-40 covered patio. You are already existing in approved event barn. The purpose for this is being driven largely by state fire marshal requirements for improved egress in the event space. The challenge that we have is that essentially, the egress doors, where they're positioned now as barn doors, need to be replaced with, you know, proper egress with panic hardware, et cetera. And in addition, the distance between the two egress doors, based on some calculation on the size of the barn, need to be 36, or 32 and a half feet apart, which would preclude us from using the two existing openings for those egress points. So, as a solution, the expansion sort of will address the egress issue, and I believe Max handed out a supplemental document to pack it with a note from our architect indicating that the fire marshal has reviewed this approach to sort of taking off those barn doors, adding in a covered patio to get the required distance, again, assuming that the proper egress is installed in that closed-in patio structure. But in addition to that, you know, we've, you know, invested in insulating that barn in its initial construction, and those barn doors are not particularly weather-friendly in the winter. So, I think this will, this will also help us sort of maintain a little bit more sort of weather tightness by improving that structure and sort of creating a more airtight environment for the winter. Additionally, you know, as we shared in April, space constraints have required a lot of the events that we're having, who are looking to have, you know, 130, 150 people, you know, bring in accessory tents and auxiliary tents, excuse me, to sort of satisfy their space needs. And, you know, this addition, and the additional speeding seating that it'll come with, will allow us, you know, additional seating capacity, which will be much more in line with the types of events that we're getting, which will help, you know, significantly help us grow our business and continue to bring more people to Walderboro.
Currently, what do you anticipate being your entire timeframe which you'll be operating?
Timeframe won't change. You know, generally, we are, our season is, you know, starting next week, next weekend, middle of May through end of October.
That's what I wanted to talk to.
And that's, we do have a couple seasonal events in the winter. You know, we do a sugar shack meal, and we've done a couple of other things. And, you know, I don't expect that to greatly increase much, much beyond that, just because that's our, that's our time off in the winter a little bit.
Yep.
But, you know, in terms of use and permitted use, there's really no change whatsoever. You know, we're still held accountable to the 15 mass gathering events that we were approved for previously. Additionally, parking-wise, you know, this will, you know, there'll be no change in parking, as we shared a copy of the contract that we have on event rental or venue rentals, and it does require that anyone having an event over 150 people, or with 60 or more cars, need to require alternative transportation. So, the 60 spots that we have, you know, in the existing gravel and grass parking lot next to the, to the event structure, and then up and down the camp road, satisfies that 60-car requirement. So, anything above and beyond that would require them to bring in alternative shuttle services. From a noise perspective, you know, our expectations is to actually reduce noise. I mean, you know, big tents out in the middle of the, of the field are not very noise, noise-proof. You know, we're going to also insulate the roof of this structure and come and create, you know, some sort of inclement weather sighting. And again, just bring all of that activity and noise in towards the event more frequently will, will certainly reduce noise impact on the surrounding area. From a traffic perspective, you know, again, not having to have trucks coming in and setting up and taking on tents will, will reduce both kind of visual distraction from motorists on 32. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I ride that road a lot on my motorcycle. But as a general rule, what kind of genre of entertainment gathering do you, do you have, you know, over the course of your season?
That's a good question. You weren't here for the initial go-around. So, the, you know, the structure we've created really is sort of taking that farm element and sort of creating farm-based events and weddings, essentially. So, we've done a number of different, different events. I think the wedding, from a wedding perspective, our focus is not to be a wedding venue.
Right.
Our plan is to have, you know, five to seven weddings a summer.
Gotcha.
But we've also done things like the Luwaldo Theater charity concert last summer. We've done other charity events and things like that, you know, just essentially trying to bring in sort of the farm-based theme to a variety of different types.
As a rule of thumb, on these wedding events, you say five to seven, is it like they get married there, or the reception is there? Is there alcohol served there? How does that work?
Yeah, so, all of the above. I mean, really, it's up to the groom. I mean, we're trying to create a space that essentially allows them sort of tabula rasa to create the event that they want. So, we have the lodging options, both in the campground, which will sleep up to 20 adults, and then we have the cottage, and, you know, for weddings and things like that, it's a full property takeover where they're actually renting the farmhouse as well.
Okay.
So, you know, in terms of how the event is executed, yes, they're, you know, in most cases, are getting married on property with their own officiant. Caterers are being brought in from the outside. You know, we don't do large event catering. And then, any alcohol beverage service is required, that they have licensed bartenders.
I see.
So, that's all, again, kind of handled by the people that are coming in and help facilitate that.
Thank you. Are there any upgrades on the woods road between your operation and Route 1?
No, but there's been discussion about, I know we talked to Kerry Lupien, who was out there this, this winter.
Yeah, nothing formal.
Doing some, just trail clearing and stuff, yeah. I think that's a goal of ours, to get that opened up and make it much more accessible.
I laid out the trail.
Yeah, I know. We, we talked about that. I think I was ...
Some, some local people just cross-country skied there this winter and ...
That's just what it was set up for.
Just, just did some trimming, and then realized, they're like, oh, we're at Topsail, so they, they got to that, that point.
Yeah. Once we get ahead of all the stuff we have to do, we hope to clean up that trail and make some own on our own property, so that people have ...
The one little reservation I had was be very careful that you're dealing with foot traffic and not motorized.
Oh, 100% on that path? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
I mean, we can't have that either. I mean, with our season, it's ...
Good.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. 100%.
I did, I think, I think, I'm sorry, Barbara, that John sort of implied in your conversation that, just for John's benefit and for the people here, you know, the original, the original application wasn't that long ago.
No.
And a number of the board members were very familiar with that, because we had a number of meetings. And then, you came last month as a pre, we often do like a pre-meeting to see if they, for the applicant to get any questions that we might have, or suggestions, to make sure to, to either come back with an answer, or to make part of the application, which we find very helpful. So, as a board, there might be less questions than you might anticipate for this, because we've been through a lot of it. So, but, but be that as it may, as, as you're new to this, ask away, ask away. It's not a, you know, if you're duplicating questions that we've already asked, it's not, it's not a problem. It's just, if you're, just so you're aware that we've been through this.
You got, that kind of been over a little bit.
Even last month, we had a discussion about, so.
So, I have a question. How come the whole fire marshal thing came up now? Why didn't it come up before?
It's been sort of an ongoing debate and discussion with the fire marshal over about six or eight months.
But wouldn't it have been part of the initial process of getting a permit for a public building?
So, essentially, yes. And, and that process started, you know, many months ago.
I mean, is that a checkbox we missed?
I, I will say, that was, it's one of those things that we did go, you know, and I wrote in my letter, you know, we talked, obviously, to the local fire marshal here, and went through the property, and made all the necessary updates there. We worked closely with Stan, you know, throughout the process. And until we got to the point of, you know, sort of working on, we've had sort of preliminary approval on the bottle club license, which is essentially how that building is, is created, because we do have a small camp store where we sell beer and wine. And so, essentially, creating the separation between the two entities, you know, it's important that we have that, that sort of license. And so, from that point, we've been working, well, first with the state liquor inspector, and then getting kind of kicked, you know, kicked around through the, through the state departments, and, you know, finally wound up with the fire marshal, and he's like, well, I need to see Stan's plans. And we're like, okay. And so, that's when we engaged the architect and all of the other pieces, and, you know, there are many other things that we're doing retroactively. So, to your point, I wish that had been the case. You know, I think in most cases, we're running a lot through this process, and certainly we have a lot of advice for anybody who wants to start a similar business. But, you know, I think, you know, for us, you know, this is sort of one of many things that we're dealing with, with the fire marshal. It's been a long process.
And the other thing I just want to bring up, because it's, with the comprehensive plan stuff going forward, Max, it occurs to me that there's no maximum number of people at an event at your place. We don't have anything for a maximum number, for instance. The only limiting factor is the 60 cars, but then you can do shuttling. It's just something for us to think about in the town. There's no maximum number. This 150 guests even is a little bit odd, because you've got to figure, if you've got 150 guests, you've got at least a dozen staff running around too, right, to support all?
Oh, sure.
I mean, does that include all the staff too, and the parking for staff? I mean, what does it include? It's something that we should figure out, because it's, you know?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a fair question. I mean, and just my perspective would be, that'd be something that would pretty easily address with the mass gathering permit process. I mean, that is a formalized process that we have to go through for each one of these things.
Right.
That could be adapted relatively easily.
Right. Anything over 200, but there's, it's, that process could, the mass gathering process could certainly be more formal than it is at the moment.
Or more refined. There could be different ...
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Department, you know, different levels or something.
Sure.
I've got a question for you. Now, based upon, again, I'm new to this, but are there ordinances that cover the amount of people that he could have, or, I mean, does the town have a set of things that we can't even discuss that they've got to follow, or is there some ability to say, you know, maybe we can stretch this or do that? That is a question I wrote down to myself.
Right. Well, it's kind of like, anybody can, a private citizen can have a family wedding on their property and hire a tent and do all this stuff, you know? So, there's a process for going to front of Stan, and who talks to the fire chief, you know, basically gets it done.
Right. You need permits for that?
Yep.
Yeah. Anything over 200 people is considered ...
200 people.
One hundred.
It's a hundreds, it's hundreds, Scott.
Over 100, I see.
And we're approved for 15 as part of our kind of initial site plan application. So, we can have 15 of those mass gatherings per year.
15. And again, at the risk of sounding redundant, are any of your abutting neighbors or townsfolk, or do they say, you know, we don't want to see this? We don't want all the traffic. We don't want these people, you know, throwing beer cans or what? Anybody like that?
I like fuel stuff, beer cans on my yard, too.
Same thing with Topsail Farm, with Moody's, with, with Delano Seafood.
Right.
In each case.
Nobody.
Their letter sent out. I don't believe I have got a statement from anyone.
I see. On this. And originally, there wasn't, for the original approval. And I also wanted to, wanted to add that frequently relative ...
Well, no. The original approval, there was the German church.
Oh, yes, there was a big discussion. That's right.
They wanted to make sure that vegetation buffer was maintained.
That's right.
But that was related to where the parking lot was for the campground, not the event space.
Correct. But there is often, a size limit comes in relative, I mean, there's parking limitations, and then anything relative to the, then there's DOT approvals often required if you're greatly changing the number of people accessing a site. So, there are other sort of things that sort of read on the number of people that might use a location or be involved in an application. So, there's peripheral things that affect that.
And just to extrapolate out, let's just say, Max, you've got four letters saying, we don't like this. What is, does the abutting neighbor or person, do they have any recourse in the process here?
So, we've actually had this case with, I think it was Ford Reiman Road, when there was discussion of having a bar, I think it was a bar downstairs. I think every neighbor that was abutting came out and said, we do not support this.
Right.
Now, we didn't get to a vote, because Dangle withdrew his application before that, but an abutting property owner tends to have a lot more way in this matter.
I see.
If it's something that is greatly concerning to them. Because there was another issue with the offices that are up at the top of the hill.
Yep.
There was concern from a neighbor about the property line, because I think it was parking or snow removal. And so, we had had to be tabled for a meeting, because the applicant didn't have a site map to outline that.
Okay. But let's, I think we could summarize and say that frequent, that we've had, I mean, we could come up, there's a large list of where abutters have commented in one way or another, positive or negative, on lots of applications, and it's something we need to take into account.
I see.
Generally, I think those issues, we try to get those addressed within the limits that, I mean, are, as a planning board, we have to, our judgment is based on whether the application meets the land use ordinance.
Right.
So, there are some, but that said, we try to, try to accommodate the abutters as, to be as fair as possible. We try to keep that into consideration, so, yeah. So, Barbara brought up a point on the head count, that I was also going, going to ask about, but a slightly different perspective. So, if there is no max, give it, you know, there is a ...
So if there is no max, give it, you know, there is a reasonable max, but if there is no max.
Common sense rules in that case, I think.
But with a seating capacity now of, I think, a hundred and fifty, it's conceivable, somebody wants a two-hundred-person event, they're going to still put up a tent.
Sure.
So there'll be fewer tents.
Correct.
And this is just a point of clarification, so nobody's surprised when a tent shows up this summer.
Yeah, no, and I, I'd like to be clear with that.
Josh said no more tents.
Reduce the amount.
Reduce the amount of tents, but the tent is still a possibility.
A possibility, for sure, yeah, and again, that's not outside the normal, already-approved kind of site usage, you know, that, that is, was an anticipated need. You know, our hope, our goal is to bring more people in, we do not want to have, you know, many, many huge weddings there. It's not, not the business we're in, really.
They're going to have the Grateful Dead.
Well, I don't know, if John, if John Sirock can, can arrange that, I probably wouldn't turn it down.
So I, I did want to capture and go back to Barbara's question, because I think it was about the fire marshal and the, whether something was missed. And I'm not sure it's necessarily a planning board, but between the code enforcement officer and the fire marshal and us, it clearly didn't get raised early enough in your process, so that would be something to try to.
Treat the architect.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a- a- again, I, we've had this conversation much around the dinner table and, you know, we feel the same way. But at the same time, the ultimate accountability is on us to make sure we have that stuff and we are paying the price at this point, literally and figuratively, to, to sort of rectify it, I think. You know, our hope is, as we told Jim earlier, trying to make lemonade out of the situation a little bit and address some of the other problems that are inherent to the structure today.
So the other question I have then is this opening between the two spaces, I mean, obviously, there's door, there's some inclusion there.
Yeah, the, the existing barn doors will stay, they just have to be open and fixed.
And fixed, okay, and so in the wintertime.
In the winter, we'll close them and, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions or comments? Anything from the citizenry? Anything else, Max? Okay.
I will approve the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carried.
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you much. Good luck.
Thank you. Yeah, now the works are.
Now the, yes.
Didn't I see the equipment out there already?
Well, yeah, that was for just the slab, so which, and we spoke to Max about that, we wanted to get approval on that, you know, whether this went forward or not. But we have framers coming on the twenty-second and then, you know, roofers and all the other stuff, so it's, thank you.
Yep.
Good luck, good luck.
Okay, uh, Moody's Diner is next.
Dan? Thank you. Something smells good back there, so. But, um, yeah, we, I'm coming on behalf of Moody's, we're seeking permission to put an addition on the rear of the restaurant. Essentially, it would be a nineteen-by-thirty addition, two-story addition, so it's, four is five hundred and seventy square feet. Next to that addition would also be another ten-by-fourteen walk-in cooler. So this would be going off the rear of the, of the restaurant. What, the reasons that we're seeking this are, there's at least four of them that I've outlined for you, not to be redundant, I'll just highlight them. So, um, one is, is safety, um, you know, those of you that are native to Walderboro know that Moody's has grown and grown and grown and grown and grown and grown. And most, all, all of our heavy stock and supply is kept in the basement, as such, it's carried up and downstairs constantly. Our laundry facilities are down in the basement. And, you know, this past year, we had one significant fall on those stairs and thankfully, injuries were minor. But over the years, there's been other falls, so we're trying to get most of our heavy stock all up on the, on the same story. So one main reason is, is safety, having our, all of our stock in a better place. Another one would be code compliance, there are regulations for both health and safety as to where you store products. And, you know, you can't put them in front of, you know, this panel or in this place. And we frankly just are running out of space, we don't have the room. So we either turn customers away, or, you know, we try to figure out a way to increase our, our storage capacity. So we're trying to be compliant with the different codes, increase safety, our office safety also currently. The offices for the staff, the administrative staff, so that would be myself, a bookkeeper, a secretary, and then our kitchen manager has, has some office work as well. That's all in the basement. And there is really one means of egress, which is at the opposite end of the building by the bulkhead stairway. So, uh, in this proposed addition, the, the second story of it would be office offices, so that would be a much safer place for those that are working in the office. And then just a benefit to our employees, we serve, or we have anywhere from sixty to eighty people that work there. We have one employee bathroom, that can be difficult. And so this addition would allow for, for two bathrooms. The addition's going to allow for a laundry area on the first floor, and it's going to allow for increased storage on the first floor. And then the second story of that addition would be the, would be the office space. So we have, we've met with Gartley and Dorsky and they drew up a, a site plan, which I believe you have. And then we have taken that and given it to Tony Lash of Last, Last Excavation. He's done, you know, since my time at Moody's, which is close to twenty years, he's done everything around Moody's that I'm aware of. So he's the guy that knows where this drain is and that is, you know. So he's taken that plan, he's developed a plan for the, for the excavation. Corbett Concrete has submitted a bid to do the concrete. So, that's where, I've never done this before, so.
I have a quick question.
First of all, being a Portland boy, I heard about Moody's fifty years ago.
Oh, okay.
It's a state and national treasure.
Yeah.
That being said, when does this excavation and building take place, what time of year?
Well, um, it's, there's two possibilities, depending on what happens here. If we get approval, I, I don't want to be doing a lot of noisy construction come July one.
Well, that was my question, how about the disruption of traffic? That's a hugely busy intersection.
Right.
You've got these big graders and so forth, so do you have a plan to ease that?
Yeah, the plan was, we were, if we had approval and it seemed feasible, because we still, I have a meeting with CMP on the sixteenth, because there are some electrical panels on the back of the building, that's got to be addressed. So the way I've answered this to people is, in my ideal world, I would love to start excavation right away and get the concrete, get all that done before summer hits. In a realistic world, it's probably not happening until, you know, after this, you know, late September, October. But that's, you know, that's the plan Tony feels as far as the excavation goes, they're going to be digging out, out back. So all of the moving with his equipment would be out back of the diner, it should not impact the flow on, on Route One at the intersection of one and two-twenty.
Out back of the diner, now how's he get to the street? I mean, I mean, the excavation happens, but that's where the hill is and all that, but, but where is he going to get access and egress to the?
He's behind the diner, and it's hard to explain if you're not back there looking. He's going to be digging a path from the parking lot side.
Yeah.
So the back of our parking lot, going behind the diner that way, and digging a path back there, basically a roadway for himself to work with. So when they're, you know, hauling stuff out, he'll have his dump trucks on that side.
Dan, but what is this green dash line right against the building heading towards the, I just can't read it?
Can I look at what you're?
Yeah, this, this piece right here, is that drainage?
That's the proposed underdrain?
I believe that's the, when Gartley and Dorsky drew this, that was a proposed drainage.
Just, can I not read that? It's so tiny.
But, no, I have to look.
At the end of that, that red box is the riprap apron.
Yeah.
So I believe that that's the proposed underdrain.
So you have town water and sewer at Moody's?
Correct.
Okay.
No, no, town sewers, but we have our own water, we have our own well.
How badly are you going to be impacted by Walderboro Granite ledge with this project?
I don't know, Ted.
I'm sure Tony knows.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and Gart.
So, so it looks like this is catching the runoff from the hill, and then it goes over to here, and I just don't know.
It will, but I think we're going to be diverting, I wrote it in here, he's going to divert more of the water, there's a pond on.
Right, over here.
The side, and like I said, Tony's done so much work here, there are drains in the back of that parking lot that, you know, push water over that way. So, um, Tony's working with this plan, but there's going to be drainage going this way to keep it from going into Route One. And frankly, when that, I mean, it was nineteen thirty-four when Percy brought the wagon down there, and I'm not sure when. But when that hill was, when he, and he did it himself, just kind of ripped into that hill to, to make room. What they're going to do there is going to increase the, is going to help with the erosion far better than what is currently there. The way that water comes out on the back of the building is not healthy right now, so.
Well, what is, what are they, oh, so is something that, because you're clearing some trees here, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's trees that have to be cleared.
And that, so what is it that's ending up being better for the drainage, is the?
Well, that.
Aproning?
It backs off the slope away from the building.
That back of that hill is going to be stepped as it goes up.
Oh, this red is new.
It's going to be one step.
Yeah, I know, but this, this is grading this way, down, away from the building, right? This grade, this grade, is it going uphill from the building?
Right now.
I get it, okay.
And it's going to be stepped back further.
Yeah, of course, because up above, behind there, it's really high up.
Cut back further into the hill.
Oh, hillwise, it's, okay.
There's going to be a lot of, of ten-wheeler trucks leaving this site, so I'm going to go back to my original question. And we're all going to exit through the main parking lot, that's going to be their access to Route One to go get rid of the material.
Yeah, or they might exit, you know, through the parking lot by the pond and on Grace Avenue where, which is right up. Either way, it goes on to Route One, right, yeah, right.
So. Uh, if I could, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please, no, no, go ahead.
It, it, I'd ask you to consider, right, to maybe talk to Tony about going the other way. You've got those half a dozen parking spaces on the, was that the west side? That are, that are almost useless because you can't get in and out of them, that, that maybe he can access from there and not cause a conflict with the construction equipment and all of your customers.
You don't think it's too close to the intersection?
Would that create more of a problem with Route One and two? Because that, that would be right at the light.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If he's entering and exiting there.
If he's right there at the light, then he's going with the light, it's, I don't know, it's, it's something to, to talk about.
I mean, I appreciate the concern, and I can certainly bring that concern to him about how we don't disrupt that, the flow on Route One. And again, going back to, when would we do this?
Yeah.
You know, again, I don't want to be doing this from July one onward and.
Right.
And ideally, um, his part of it, you know, if we were to start this now, would, you know, in theory, be done by, he's estimating maybe three weeks, four weeks for his part of it, so.
So I have one question relative to the, one of the waivers you're requesting is for the net, net developable acreage. And so I'm not sure.
Excuse me, one of the waivers I'm requesting.
Yeah, yeah, that.
That matches description.
Yeah, these were just items that weren't included in the application, and what it was net developable acreage.
Is that just because, do we, what's the total acreage here?
Well, the reason, the reason that's in there is because, as mentioned in the application, Dan is combining this lot along with the one to the left.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you, six dash five.
Mm-hmm.
So, he's already going to be expanding his acreage, so he's expanding that.
Yep. And, um, since that's sort of between two different Moody entities, I'm assuming that's a pro forma, but that's a, that's still a, that hasn't happened yet?
No, it's in the lawyers.
Okay.
Making it, putting it together, yeah, there's two Moody entities, and the four members of one are the same four members of the other. Unfortunately, when we purchased Lot Five, we should have had the LLC purchase it instead of Moody's Restaurant Inc., and that wouldn't be part of this, but we didn't do that, so.
So you're quite satisfied now with your total need for water for all purposes? You don't need a line to the, now, supply?
We don't at this point in time, so.
Is there a larger plan available?
Bigger than.
Bigger than this, this drawing.
Yeah, do you have one, Dan?
Dan, is that?
I like, I gotta see the date at the bottom of yours.
Okay.
They're talking about the plan that, um, that provided me.
Right, now that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Uh, what's the date?
This is a van's copy.
November eighth.
No, mine are the initial, one that I have here is the September one, one, September ten, so I don't have the November eight.
I guess I don't have a, a real issue, but it sure would be nice to be able to read the site plan.
The full, and they certainly, you know, yeah.
Is that the larger one, right?
No, it's, it's from, it's also a Gartley and Dorsky, but it's another review.
Bigger one than that.
Right.
Yeah, um, yeah, because this is, this is awful hard to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Along these lines, and I wrote a note to myself on all four of these projects, and I went over them for a couple hours. In my, in my participation on the Sylvania Task Force, which I've been on for a year and a half, we've had all kinds of plans and areas of use. It's my feeling, my sensibilities, that sometimes these plans and these, the description really doesn't really give you the sense of what is there. And I'm, I jog by that plan, and it's a lot different than what I'm seeing. And I'm wondering, as a matter of course, does the planning board ever, is there any precedent where if you have a question, you actually go out to the site and see what it is that people are discussing so you get a better understanding?
Yes, we've had a lot of discussions about site visits, and the board has done site visits. When you do a site visit, it becomes a public meeting.
Right.
And it needs notification as well as notification to the abutters. And so there have been cases where we've, where we've insisted on a site review and done that.
It's a lot of coordination.
Yeah, it takes a lot of coordination, and if, you know, if we felt, for example, in, in a particular case.
Sure.
That we, we preferred to delay the, and a vote or a further discussion of a, of a site, of an application. It's, it's within our purview to, to request a site, a site visit and do that.
And, and in your experience, or the board's experience, does that help in any way, does that change your opinion, does it add to it, take away, or?
I've only participated in one, and it was helpful.
It was helpful, okay.
In that particular case.
If you had, I'd say if you had specific questions, please bring them up. To me, this whole game is like my backyard.
Yeah.
And, uh, there, there is no real mystery, but in your perspective, definitely voice your concerns.
Right. So I thi- and I think, I think the ca- the issue would be too, do we have, is there something specific that we feel we, we need that would require a visit that otherwise we can't, we can't make a valuable, you know, corrected determination?
I mean, I just, again, I just think in the tra- I mean, I drive there all summer on my bike, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going to be going on there. I mean, there's a lot of people, traffic, this, that, I'm just wondering, does anybody take, have the foresight to coordinate it so it's the least disruptive? And by looking at it, I'm thinking, you, you, to your point, you said it's too close to that road, so, you know, maybe if you visualize it, you'll, you'll really see how impactful it is.
Right, but it's not really our job to regulate a job site, you know, the owner, you know, he obviously is going to impact his business.
Right.
So in a way, our, our scope of our job description is fairly limited, we've got to trust that people are going to carry forth their own projects intelligently.
Beyond, beyond that, yes. The State Highway Department has had tremendous, uh, overviews of that site and keenly aware of the whole situation. So they would step in? Absolutely. I got, okay.
Well, and if, if this, if, if any site plan review, again, going back to our previous discussion, if, for example, this was an addition that would. if, for example, this was an addition that would increase the number of people going to, using the restaurant on a given day, it would impact therefore the parking and the traffic, and there would be another whole set of requirements and, and likely, you know, require DOT approval.
Exactly.
As part of the process. So in this case, this is not, it's making it easy for your staff, but it's not increasing. It's, it's not increasing the number of people, you know, using the restaurant.
Sure.
So it's a, that's a distinction, so, but it's a very good point. You're making a good point.
I think we have that many employees.
I was recently making the same point, so.
Yeah.
I would, I would say for the benefit of the board, that when we get the packet, and from looking, you know, you know, all of us, we're relying on each other to do our due diligence beforehand, that when in looking through the packet, you really feel that a site review would really help. It would be good to let everybody know, especially Max, immediately, because it's gonna delay everything else if we don't do a site plan review. You know, we have, it affects the whole scheduling of everything, and then delays the applicant, and, and if it's needed, we need to do it. But if it's not needed, we don't wanna unnecessarily delay things, so. So please let it, you know, as a board, you know, let, let everybody else and then Max know if you think a site, a site review would make sense. Okay.
All that said.
Yes.
If I see a plan that, that I think is gonna have a lot of issues with construction logistics, and there's no plan in place to do it, I'd be really reluctant to approve it, just as a point of reference. I think it has to be buildable in a safe way. And, and I think this, this is, it can be done. I've got all the confidence in the world in Tony, he'll sort it out. But it's just worth some, some forethought before you get there.
Yeah.
Well, I have no further questions.
Likewise.
Anything else?
No.
Anything from the, okay, attendees, okay. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve this with the contingency of the property purchase that you're waiting for. Assuming that's, the four of you get schizophrenic, and the other four refuse to sign. Families, you know, anyway, but just so it's known that it's contingent upon acquiring that property. Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate your time.
See you later.
Okay. Item four is Delano Seafood.
Delano.
Delano, I'm so sorry. And, and his patience for being fourth on the list, so.
Wow, we came in kinda late. We're happy to be fourth. I used to have everyone saying Delano, Delano, so I, I don't take offense to that, so.
I wouldn't pay classmates a mind.
Yeah, I'm Campbell Delano. I'm from Delano Seafood. We've been in operation since 2004, and I just want to bring in more variety to our customers, and I've been wanting to do this for a few years, and so I decided to look for doing it this year. I purchased an eight-and-a-half by twenty-eight building trailer, and I'm looking to have cooked fried seafood, lobster rolls, crab meat rolls, and other food items, ice cream. We have a big clientele now. I think it's gonna go really good. We've, we always, we get, we sell lobster rolls and crab meat rolls as it is now, and we get people come in every day wanting more things, and thinking that we already provide this, but we don't. And that's why I'm here, just looking for you guys to approve this idea. There was, there was one other thing on the, I think it's under a report. We was gonna use our existing power, but my electrician said he recommended to put in a pole and have our own service there, because we have a lot of items on our system panel in Delano Seafood as it is. So Tony Lash is gonna do that pot company, put in the pole, and Justin Gilchrist is gonna do the service. And we gotta, I got a permit from the state for approval of the pole. And the sewer, we was gonna, I was gonna have holding tanks and then put it into our sewer, but we, I'm looking for, we're having two holding tanks, two hundred gallon tanks, and we're having a water body put there anyway, so it's gonna be pumped every Thursday. So we're gonna have two holding tanks, one for gray water, one for a bathroom that's in the trailer. And I talked to Crockett Septic System, and he's the one that's gonna set me up with the water body, and he's gonna be pumping the other two tanks at the same time.
These are below grade? The tanks are below grade? Buried?
No.
They're not?
No, no, it's, the trailer's not, you know, movable, so we, I don't want them below grade. They can be like a camper style, but I'm gonna have them enclosed, you know, our building, shut around them so you don't see them. But I talked to Crockett Septic today, and he, he said that that's no problem. He can pump them at the same time as the water body. That way, we won't be using the septic at all, and the plumber will be hooking up our water, and we're gonna have our own pump off our well, so the water doesn't come from holes from Delano Seafood.
What would be the distance between your septic systems and the brook? How are you gonna relate to the brook?
The, the holding tanks? The holding tanks are gonna be, they're probably a hundred feet from the brook.
Hundred feet, good, good.
Yeah, I, it's, we're on the opposite side. I have the original septic systems on the other side of the land. But to avoid having, we won't have much water, you know, it's just gonna be from washing dishes and stuff in the bathroom. We have a bathroom in Delano Seafood, so, you know, sometimes we'll probably be using that too, but, so we're not gonna have a lot of stuff to pump anyway, but when they, when we get going, we see if, if it doesn't need to be pumped by every two weeks, Hill Crockett Septic will tell us, you don't have to do it so often.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So the food truck, what happens in the winter? It just closes and lines are drained?
If, when we're looking for, I'd like to have it.
That's a big, is that all kitchen stuff in there, or is there like a little seating?
No, it's all kitchen.
Wow.
It's all kitchen.
Wish my kitchen was that big.
It's a very big kitchen.
Yeah.
I looked at one, when I first talked to Max, about a twenty footer when I looked in Massachusetts, but then I see this one that come up, come from Otosaco that was set up on Old Orchard Beach, and that extra eight feet just made a big difference. I won't, we won't have, if we have three people working in there, they're not gonna be bumping into each other. There's plenty of room. And this system was already certified by the state for food grade, and so I, Monday, I am taking a Surf Safe course out of Portland, so then the state will come down and certify the wagon then. But they won't certify until they take that course.
So is it, I mean, obviously picnic tables are seasonal, but will you be serving food, I mean, takeout all year out of this?
If, if it goes really good, the plan is to be running all year, to have chowders and, you know, lobster rolls and still have food in the wintertime, but of course, we, they won't be able to sit out and picnic tables. It's like a takeout, take home thing. And, you know, if it goes good, that's, I was debating on adding on to the store, having seating in there, but I figured this way, we'd do this first. If it goes good, maybe down on the road, down in the future.
Yep.
Have seating inside like that.
Yep.
It's just something I've always wanted to do. My, and my dad likes the idea, but he has crews in, so this, this is one of the things that, you know, car crews in every Wednesday, and this is the thing that I kinda wanted to do for him to, to bring more people in for that, too.
Hi, I'm, I'm a huge small business owner, being, having had one in Portland for fifteen years, so I don't know, you may not know this question, Mr. Chairman, you may. So I was writing the other day, and I went to this Always, which just popped up. Is there any ordinance in the town of Walderboro that says you can have X number of food trucks? They did this in Portland many years ago. They limited it because there was one popping up every corner. So in Walderboro, the town, can anybody, I mean, is there, so there's no limit?
No, there's no, and there's no, there's nothing in the land use ordinance that, you know, it's not, it's not our job as a board to question somebody's marketing.
Right.
That, if they, you know, that, they, they can get enough business or not for whatever they're trying to do, is not, is not, there's nothing in the land use ordinance relative to that.
In my experience in Walderboro, running a business, a lot of things are constrained seriously by the lack of population.
Right.
Population makes an incredible difference, is what, what goes and what doesn't.
And the fact that these are on Commercial Route One, which we want traffic thing, events, you know, things like that to be kind of concentrated there is kind of a positive to the idea.
And that there's so much, you know, you know, temporary, but traffic in the, in the summer season, there's tremendous amount of traffic going up and down Route One. That's an economic opportunity for businesses in long.
Yeah.
The one that we have is, is very wide open.
Yeah.
We probably have like, you know, we have a ten, ten parking spot for the Delano Seafood, and then I moved the car, so it's over this way, so we can have like our own, another ten car parking lot. So we could probably park, if you wanted, if cars came in there, you could park forty cars. I mean, that one day, I mean, a couple of years ago, when, when they closed the shrimp season, we had, I was able to get shrimp that year, and we must have had sixty cars in there that one day.
Wow.
People want shrimp. It was nuts, because, you know, they close the season, so.
Should have had an auction.
Yeah, it was, it was an awesome thing, because, you know, they let, they let Tespros go out, and my buddy got the Tesperam in, and every Friday was just packed just like that.
Wow.
So we got plenty of room for everything like that.
So I, I may have just missed this, but how, how big is your lot, and how much frontage do you have?
Um, I don't have that on me. The lot's three and a half acres.
Okay.
Might be closer to four. I think it's a hundred and, uh, three hundred foot frontage, I'm thinking.
Maybe a little less, about two fifths, I've just. Oh, you've got, you're going on now.
I'm not, I'm not positive. I can't remember that.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah.
Certainly the. The sight lines are good, Dan.
It's a big, flat area.
Yeah, the sight lines are really, yeah, it's a.
The sight lines are pretty good, too.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah.
Set the trade with links.
Yeah.
Couple, couple of questions.
Please.
For your account. I'm looking at all of the, the earlier wastewater system approvals, and there was a signed approval from someone to, to authorize the holding tank, that that's there now. Have you updated that with the plan for the two tanks you're gonna have, or has someone approved the, your plan, the way you plan to, to manage all the water, the wastewater?
We, we have no holding tank in there now. It's, it's a septic system. There's no holding tank.
Okay.
We might have got one before, but we never used, you know, might have, maybe when Dad did it, we never put one in. What's in there now is a septic system that.
Okay, with a field and everything else?
Yeah, with a field and everything.
Okay.
So that's already in there. That's why Max happened to bring that up about someone asking that, because we talked about, you know, dumping it into our sewer, but I think someone had a, a question about that. It's not big enough. Maybe it was something you read.
But actually, what I'm looking at is, is on this page, it says there'll be no food prep in the building.
Right.
Because it was just a holding tank.
Yeah.
But you, but this, this must be out of.
Yeah, probably, yeah, yeah.
That's good to know.
Yes. Because it, I mean, when we bought it, there was, you know, the building we was in, plus a trailer. It was a mobile home on the Ironnet side, and so the sewer was big enough for that trailer and everything.
Yeah, because this, so that's really out of date, because it says no residence either.
That was when Sawyer's owned it.
Yeah, Sawyer's name's on it.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, just a point that this, what was provided was built back in nineteen ninety-six.
Oh, yeah.
Which is the hole that you had to get a variance request because there was no holding tank for this.
The other question I had for you was, was lighting.
Yep.
Basically, there's no plans to change the lighting or approve it because you plan to be open in daylight hours.
Right.
But you might also be open in the wintertime.
Right, right.
Come seven o'clock in October, it's dark.
Now, we're open year in at the Delano Seafood, nine to five thirty. What we got, we got four LED lights, outside lights, one on each side of the building, which lights it up quite a bit. The only, when we put in the power pole, we might have, I'm thinking, a light on top of that, so it'd show, it would light up the stand, the trailer. That way, there'd be good lighting, because the pole they're putting in is gonna be a twenty, it's a twenty-five foot pole. That way, so the trucks can, you know, the tractor trailers can get in, deliver and stuff, so it won't affect that. So that would be a perfect spot to put a, put a light on.
Yep.
Max?
Downlit, the light going down. You have to kind of, you know, because of cars.
Yes, yeah, we're just gonna have one, like, like those, like on the building now. The ones on the building, you know, come out, shine down. It won't, that's what we'll put on the pole.
Max?
Yes?
Would you have any restrictions on the type of lighting you would be using, attached to that pole?
Do you mean LED versus anything else, or?
Yeah, exactly.
I'd, I'd be putting the LED up, because that's what we have on the other, all the other four on the building.
Town is moving to LED.
Yeah.
I just want to be sure.
Yeah, we, we changed it when on efficiency main, when they had that. We put in, we had regular lights, and we put in all LED lights. I got LED lights, everything in the market, inside, outside, is all LED.
Much more efficient.
Well, I think the, the down, I think the down shining is.
In terms of what the town requires for business, the light just can't, I can read the.
Trouble the traffic.
But, yeah, it, the light can't impair people who are driving by, or it can't just shine into a neighbor's house every day. But we can't control whether they choose LED or another source.
I just want to be sure that that was thoroughly understood.
In, in the trailer now, we have, I think there's like one LED light up there, and there's five other lights, and I was gonna have them switch LED to, just because when I switched them inside the seafood bucket, it just made everything so much brighter. Everything's so much better for people to see.
So something like this, I'm just kinda curious, the fact that it's a trailer and your family business, you're gonna be around for a while, are you, do you put it on blocks, or do you leave it on the tires?
Yeah, right now, it's on its own, we've leveled it up in its own, one side's on blocks to level it up. But probably, when winter comes, we'll just, if, you know, if we close it, I'll just put it on blocks so it won't ruin the tires. That's what we'll do. I mean, if it goes good, I, probably next year, maybe, I'll come and talk about putting a slab, so it sits on the slab, which will be better.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Why is, why exactly, so it's sort of a change of use, is that why it's, I know Stan's out of commission right now, but it's coming before the planning board specifically because.
Change of use, new commercial structure, and because it would primarily be a restaurant, separate from, it would also be a restaurant, it's, this is an odd case, which is why I really wish food wagons and trucks were in the ordinance.
As an individual, yeah.
Three years ago, we had a truck there, but it weren't run by us, it was run by someone we knew on Manhattan Island, and, but he just didn't run it. He didn't show up. He didn't show up, you know, he, he's had said hours, he'd, he'd be an hour too late in the middle of the day, he'd leave for two hours, but you can't do that.
Yeah.
Hours are hours, and he was doing good. It's just, he just, his help just left when they wanted to leave and come back when they wanted to, so.
And that's the other part, because the last one, it was a temporary different owner, whereas this time, it's, it's amending the current landowner's use and there's an expect, you, you might have it year round, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's another part of it.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Anything else from the board? I believe we have a, an a butter comment.
Uh, I'll read that if there's no comments from the, uh, the audience.
Any comments from the audience? Sir, could you, could you say?
This is my first time being here at a planning board meeting. But far as I'm concerned, business creates jobs.
Indeed.
And we need jobs. So, and we need business if we're gonna grow. I don't know about you people's property tax, but mine's high enough. More business we brings in here, it alleviates some of that.
Good, thank you. Could you tell us your name, so we can?
I'm Melvin Williams. I live in South Walderboro.
Okay, thank you.
I milked cows there for forty years.
Good for you.
They sawed my legs off, so I don't milk cows.
But to add to that comment, like jobs, I mean, we have four working in Delano Seafood now, with my family and, we're technically five. So, adding this, we're gonna add three to four more jobs.
Good deal.
Um, because I, I go lobstering, so, um, I won't be there all the time, so I'll have a couple good managers running it. And then, if everything goes good, I'm hoping to maybe retire. If I daddy retire, I love lobster.
Oh, I thought you were gonna, I thought you were gonna add a third job instead of the, just the two.
Yeah. I'm, I'm hoping to get out of that, because this would be so much easier on my body than lobstering, so, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. So, for the record though, Max, if you would read the.
Yes, I received one abutting property owner's, one abutting property neighbor's, uh, comments, uh, like, an hour before this meeting, because I was out for the day. So, I'll, um, I won't read the top half for the person's information and I'll just.
Sure.
And I am, I am kind of just auto-correcting it, because there's some, uh.
Yeah, yeah, grammatically.
But, uh, this is from Donald Grady.
Grady or Grady?
Grady.
G-R-A-D-Y.
Thank you.
Indeed.
I, Donald J. Grady, Jr., do not agree to have a food truck slash restaurant next to my property for a number of reasons, like noise, smell, et cetera, trap, uh, and traffic. My wife, Sandy Grady, also doesn't want a food wagon slash restaurant. Uh, I also believe that this is not considered a food wagon, as a food wagon is typically a six by eight structure, but this is an eight and a half by twenty-eight. I do not approve this, I would like this for the record. Donald Grady and his family.
So, I didn't see a traffic thing here, Max. He said, anyway.
Uh, he, I called him.
Okay.
When I got back, because I got, context, so I got back at the town office at five PM today, and I saw that he called me twice and sent this email. I called him.
Okay.
And so, that's where the traffic came in.
Okay.
Because he wanted to make sure that his comments were s, recorded at the meeting.
Got it, okay. Because his note also says, um, that it's trying to compete with Moody's.
Yeah, I, I told.
Well, you were, you were, yeah.
I told him on the phone that, I told him that that and being a restaurant in the commercial district are not valid reasons for the planning board to deny an application.
Mm-hmm.
Or at least it shouldn't.
Correct, yeah.
Um, but I said that the noise, the traffic, the smell, all of that are items that are plausible and you can discuss.
Okay.
Where is his building located?
So, if you look on your maps.
Yes.
Uh, the old Grady is the property to the left.
Okay.
Um, the property, so between the food truck and the property line is about a hundred twenty-six feet. I could not tell you where his residential building is. I didn't, I didn't have enough time to check that.
Would he be owning the old Savannah Warehouse?
That must be, that's the only building close to us.
You and I would wear that.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing back there.
That's the only building close to us is on the other side, right behind Golden Walk, the Chinese restaurant.
Uh, he.
Oh, hmm.
On the other side of the tracks, then.
On the other side of the tracks, it's not even, you can't see it from my place. Yeah. I didn't know, I didn't know there was, I didn't even know about that, yeah.
I'm trying to visualize it.
It's quite a ways away. I mean, he's closer to, he's right, right behind AmeriGas and, he's closer to, to the gun place and Chinese, the, the smoke shop, yeah. He's not really close to us at all, yeah.
So, I would, yeah, okay.
But, I don't know how far exactly he is, that building would be from us. It's gonna be quite a ways, because it's on the other side of the tracks.
He mentioned that he intends to, uh, build a residential structure more inland, so that's probably why he's bringing this up, which I, I really can't say too much on that. I mean, you're here now.
Right.
He intends this in the future.
Yeah.
Well.
He can't come too close to us, because there's wetlands there, right?
Serious.
There's serious wetlands there, so that's gotta be protected a lot somewhere there.
But the main thing that he, the points he do, does bring up are the traffic, noise and smell, which.
Right.
I'll leave to you guys to discuss.
Well, what would be your comment relative to those three topics?
I know, we're gonna have more traffic, most likely. Um, I, I don't see it even, his driveway is coming off of two twenty.
Yes, exactly.
His driveway's off two twenty, I'm off, off of Route One, a quarter mile away. So, that traffic part, I don't understand. The smell, I, it's, he lives by the Golden Walk and Moody's already, and there's food there, so I don't know what he would.
Volumes that, uh.
And I already have, like I said, we've been seafood market for fourteen years and we don't, and we, we deal in seafood. And if you go up there outside, you don't smell no seafood.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we keep the place immaculate clean, because of the, we don't want a seafood market, our seafood market smelling like a seafood market. We want it smelling.
Yeah.
You've got a lifetime of experience and know what you're doing.
Yeah, that's what we want.
I'm presuming fried food would be the.
Right.
Primary.
Yeah.
Smell issue.
Right.
Um, prevailing westerly winds is away from his property.
Correct. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of woods there, but I don't know how close he is, I can't tell you.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
It's, there's nothing, yeah, it might be just a contemplated, but it's not there now.
Do you sell fried food there now?
We don't, no.
So, it's interesting, um, issues, but I think anyone who, um, wants to build a residence close to Route One is gonna face those issues at some point or another, um, because it's our commercial area, so.
I'd move to approve the application.
I just ask a question.
Is there a second?
One second, one second.
Motion made in section for Ken.
Just a point, uh, you mentioned you were going to the state for what approval? You were getting certain approvals?
On the serve safety course?
Yeah.
Um, that's, to, to run a restaurant, you gotta go take this course and pass it. So, if I don't pass it that day, you know, it's not gonna be open, but I have to take the course again, or I wouldn't pick, imagine. So, it just shows on all the safety. It's like I'm, the lunch wagon has a really good ten-foot exhaust system in it, um, with the fire suppressor and then everything for safety.
I just asked to have that when you get that, just like.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I mean, so, I, I, I do have the, all the marine, I went, got the marine licenses for, um, the retail selling, the lobster rolls and stuff.
All right.
Doing the lobster meat, I got them licenses.
Do you have to get those re, refreshed every couple of years, or every year?
Every year. I mean, the, the licenses, um, the Delano Seafood licenses, you know, just, just the marine pie is, um, around a thousand dollars a year. That's just the marine pie, then you gotta go, then you gotta go to the agriculture. We have an agriculture license for the seafood market, but this, this don't go under the agriculture, it goes under the.
Because it's like.
Human Safety Board because of food, yeah, which all restaurants have to do.
Okay.
Ken, oh, go ahead. So, it's a quick question.
Yep.
Do you know Mr. Grady?
I don't know him, never, never seen him, never.
See, they don't all know history.
No, don't know him at all, yeah. I know, I didn't know who owned that spot.
It's been sold.
Well, his address is listed as four, uh, so, okay.
Recently, he bought, bought it.
Well, I think he may have owned it a long time and had some difficulties and hasn't shown up here, uh, very rarely.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's, that's gonna change, but. John, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering, I'm just interested about the smell thing. I mean, don't you get inspected by an agency to make sure everything is?
Yes, they come in and inspect the truck.
So, the smell, what, what, the smell is, I'm not, I'm not getting that piece.
Yeah, I wouldn't think much would come out of it, I'm guessing, because it's not a quarter of the size of Moody's, so.
Right.
I mean, they must have, they have, their kitchen must be a lot bigger than mine.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not exactly sure what this, how much smell would come out of it, but it would be the fried food and stuff.
Just fried food.
Well, Dan was here earlier, you could've asked him.
Right.
So.
I think I can smell Moody's food.
Right.
You know, when I come out of the seafood market, I smell their food.
We're ready for a motion.
So, so any, I mean, any motion makes the assumption that the state license requires.
Yes, everything, that's like I told you, everything has to be state approved before that, yeah.
Sometimes, it, we'll often make it a contingency, just for John's benefit.
Yeah.
Make it a contingency that certain things that, that they don't actually have in their hands, they have to have before, but for, in the, in this particular case, the, the state is gonna, you know, the state require.
Fee pays for the inspector, obviously.
Yeah. Um, so, we've had a motion made and seconded, any other comments? Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, no, who is the motion and second?
Um, made by Ted and seconded by Jim. Any other comments or questions? Motion has been made to approve and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. You're good to go. Good luck.
And the motion is not contingent.
No.
See you later.
Yeah.
This has been wanting to operate.
We haven't been signing, that's a really good point. We haven't signed anything.
I figured because we had four applications in a row.
That we wouldn't take the time to sign?
You didn't, you didn't wanna take five minutes to sign.
Good decision, good decision.
So, just, I'm just gonna.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you very much. So, we are done with site reviews, and we can move to old business in minutes. Um, and then we can sign things.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so, for, the only old business I have for the moment that I, well, I, we have some old business. Um, how about the minutes for the last meeting? Shall we cover that? Are we ready to do that?
We decided on the pike, the pikes and the apostrophes.
How about, how about, are there any other comments besides Susan's, um, apostrophication issue?
No, not from me.
Because I've, I'm fine with, I already gave the changes and they're already reflected in this. Um, so, John wasn't at the last meeting, so he wouldn't vote. So, um, I would entertain a motion that the minutes be accepted as printed with, um, an occasional errant apostrophe on pikes being removed, per Susan's.
Funny.
Can, can we also?
Yes.
Uh, change the spelling of planning board in action item number three under Johnstone, it should be capital B, little o.
Oh, that's cute. I didn't miss that entirely. Yes.
Wait, where is this?
Page four, action item three under Johnstone, line one, starting consult Economic Development Committee about ways to make the planning board review. Planning board should have capital B and a little o, please.
Could I have a motion to accept the minutes as modified?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Any other questions or comments or edits? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Is John?
John wasn't there, so he's.
So, it's gonna be four to O to one abstain.
I abstained also.
And you also abstained?
Yes.
So, can we approve them, just three of us?
Two abstain.
Um, yes, because we're overall a quorum, but it was a majority of those voting.
Right.
I believe that that is the rule.
Max, if you can send me a copy of the minutes.
We're three of the five that were here.
I would be glad to make those corrections for your file copy.
Good point.
Um, I can, I mean, that's the only thing that's being changed, I can just make that correction and upload it.
Good.
Well, you were supposed to have made those changes before, I thought.
I saw a copy that, that was fixed, and, but now I can't find it, so I, I.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, yeah.
You, you can send me the minutes corrected and everything, and I'll upload it, I'll link to Susan.
I don't, I don't have the final version. Somebody other than I made the final.
Oh, you mean that one? Oh. You don't have an electronic version of that?
No, because I wasn't the one that was responsible for it.
If Max, you would.
I thought Max made, you suggested some changes and Max said he had already made them, and the copy that I got after that didn't have the corrections.
Okay. So, Max, if you could send this version to Susan and you make the corrections.
Thank you.
And then send them back. And then I can, then you can upload them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Not that, that's not that confusing. So, um, I have one other old business, but Max, do you have anything that you wanted to?
Yes.
Cover? Cover, okay.
Um, looking at the terms, there are two planning board members who terms are up.
Could it be me?
It is Barbara.
Oh, good.
And Ted. Julie just needs to know if you simply wanna renew or if you'd like to step down. Since we've just gotten two new members, I beg you, please don't.
So when is, when, June? Is June right?
June is when the fiscal year is, June 30th is the end of the fiscal year, so it would be nice to have an answer sometime before then.
As long as my health holds up, I'll volunteer.
I will tell Julie.
We hope your health holds up regardless of whether you come back, but we, we beg you to stay.
Okay, your old business?
Um.
Oh, and since I brought up that, we still also will accept more applications since Tara has unfortunately had to move away so selfishly.
Yes.
So you're saying we still have a vacancy?
Yes.
Yes, cause, cause Tara has left.
How big is the board supposed to be?
Was that seven? Yep, so we'll be at six. Sarah just was traveling, so she couldn't make tonight, but she's very reliable. Good, okay. Last, last couple meetings, last meeting we talked about, um, reviewing Article Six, which is in the land use ordinance, um, covers how site plan reviews go and those kinds of things. That we felt that it likely needed some updating and that if we had a meeting that didn't, that had time and not a bunch of site plan reviews, that we would try to address it. Max, do you know of anything coming up next month for site plan reviews yet?
That's what he said last month.
What's that? I know, he said probably not, and then boom.
No, he hedges bets on.
Yeah, but well, I would, frankly speaking, I'd rather be dealing with site plan reviews than Article Six.
First of all, if I recall correctly, last month I said Toppsol is a guarant, Toppsol up here were guaranteed.
Yeah.
There's two others I don't know about.
Yeah, we're just, we were just giving you a hard time.
Pulling your leg.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what is, what is your take on expectations?
I have not heard a single word about it.
Okay, okay.
I also am dealing with people who need code enforcement officer approval, but.
Okay.
I don't have anything on someone building a new yield farm or anything like that.
Okay. So, uh, let's do this, if, if the board is amenable, to, um, that we'll plan for the meeting on June 12th to take a pass at talking about Article Six. That, which means in the meantime, between now and that meeting, if everybody could take a, take a pass at reviewing Article Six to come with your suggestions and ideas as to what we can do to, to improve that and make it more reasonable in terms of what, what we're actually doing and what we think it should look like.
Is it a general, general review of content that we've done?
Yes, exactly. So, if in the meantime, uh, we feel we're gonna get a number of site plan reviews or pre-applications, Max, please just let me know and we'll, we'll, we'll call it off and you can postpone your work. If you're like me, I don't think about it till the week before, but then I get to it, so.
If I don't, like, like pass, if I don't receive any applications by, I think it is next Friday?
Yeah, soon, yeah.
Yeah. If I, no, actually, I think there's a, there's an extra Wednesday for this month, so I think it's actually two Fridays. If I don't hear anything, I'll, um, send out a message saying no applications.
Please, great, that'd be great. So if there aren't, then please count on reviewing Article Six.
Mr. Chairman?
Where could I get a copy or have access to this article?
Max has it?
I am literally gonna give you the ordinance after the meeting tonight.
Yep, you're gonna have the whole, not just Article Six, you get the whole shooting match.
Roger that.
So, um, that'll keep you busy for a while.
And if you can't sleep at night, it works really well.
Yeah. Um, great. Anything else? We have a little bit of time and I did postpone, if you don't mind, did you have something else, Max? I was gonna ask John to, maybe each of us could, so John gets to know us, we get to know, we, usually we like to hear from the new members a little bit about their background, but.
Yeah, we've gone through ninety minutes of a meeting, but go ahead and tell us.
Yes, but, but if, but you know, just a couple minutes would be.
Okay, uh, well, I'm a Portland native, I lived in Portland for a good part of my life. I'm in the health field, I worked at Maine Medical for twenty years, I work at Miles, I'm a registered respiratory therapist. If God willing, I can retire in two months. Uh, I did have a business in Portland during the Renaissance, if you will, of the old port. We had a big, big health club and we sold fitness equipment, so we've got some, some, you know, some experience in that. And basically, the whole, the whole primogenesis of me being here was my work on the Sylvania Task Force.
Oh, okay.
And that really piqued my interest.
Okay.
And, uh, I think, Matt, one of those meetings you said there was two, there were two vacancies, uh, and, and I said, you know, the, the planning board, I believe, can make a big difference. So I've been in Waldenboro for three years now, I really, really like it. I, I, it's a wonderful town. There's a beautiful melange of people. I mean, on that Soviet, Sylvania Task Force, I mean, there's some, so my goal is, I have always been civically oriented. And you know, and I hate people just complaining, you know, you do something. So, that is my, my rationale.
Well, welcome.
I did have one question though.
Sure.
Not that I wanna get into politics, but once I read these articles, so if you have a situation, you, you vote on what the ordinance states or what you believe common sense wise might be good. That to me would be like a, in the, in the Supreme Court, not to say with the Supreme Court, but you can be a juror.
Traditionalist or?
And take it literally, or do you, are you a, so that would be my only question as far as, how, how, how would you?
I'm not gonna answer for anybody else, but on my behalf, I think we, uh, do our best to find the, the nexus of both common sense and the legal interpretation of the land use ordinance.
For the intention of, what was the behind the intention of the ordinance sometimes? Because the ordinance, the language needs work, so it's not a perfect document.
So it's a living, breathing document.
Well, it should be, and the comprehensive plan committee is working on changing some of that language, so it works better for us.
Right.
Cause a lot of things aren't, aren't, aren't included, like, you know, food trucks and things, you know?
And there's a lot of things not anticipated.
Yeah.
As population density increases, we're gonna have more problems, inevitably.
Right, right.
I guess, I guess, sorry, to answer your question, the food wagon would actually be an example. We don't see the word food wagon, but at the same time, it's a restaurant, so you could have gone to the category of there's, there's no such thing as a food wagon in this ordinance, we have to say no to it.
Right.
Or you could say, a food wagon is just a different form of a restaurant, restaurants are allowed, let's approve a restaurant.
So it either comes to your interpretation of that, or how do you add an ordinance? Who, who, what's the process? Does the town?
The ordinance is.
Select people do that?
Yeah, it involves a select board and the town through.
Town people get to vote on that. We just went through a.
Shoreland.
Yearland, year-long process of, in the, between, cause periodically the land use ordinance and articles get revised.
I see.
The state changed their rules on the shoreline, so we needed to, and it was enough of change that we felt, the town felt we needed to make our shoreline zoning be in conformance with the state. We can be more restrictive than the state, but not less restrictive. But the state needs, still would have a final approval over it. So we, but we looked at the whole article to try to make it clearer within limits and make it conform with the state, and we went through that whole process. It went to the select board, they came back and asked us to look at a couple of other things more, we spent some more time on it. Then we went back to the select board and said, this is the version we would like to propose. We had a couple of, um, open meetings for the, to give the public opportunity to respond, which nobody, we didn't get any, anything really. But then it's gonna go to, the, the select board approved it to, to be voted on by the public in June.
I see.
So that ordinance change will be, will, will be up to the public to decide, cause it's to the whole town to decide what it should look like. So, that's the process. Well, thank you, we're, we're glad you've joined us. We've been pretty efficient tonight, so we actually have an opportunity to go, to get home earlier than I expected. Is there anything else we should discuss tonight?
John, were you here for any particular reason?
Uh, I'd like to ask a question if I may.
You may, now's the time, before we stop.
Thank you, really appreciate it. I'm John Lawrence and I live in North Waldenboro. On a little dirt road that's one mile long, that some of you are not familiar with. I've lived there for twelve years. I came here from living in a rural part of United States, one place or another, including Vermont, the mountains of California. And I've had a lot of rural and environmental experiences and also ordinance experiences. Currently, um, we are going through a moment in time that's very pivotal for the future of this town. And it has to do with the inclusion of, um, the, I guess, medical marijuana, registered caregivers. And, um, I'm coming here to say tonight that we live within a mile of one of the best examples of what I call home occupation violations for the last twelve years. And, uh, over that period of time, I tried to bring it to the town's attention that it needed to be dealt with and I was denied any access to any reasonable consideration. And I am here to ask the planning board, number one, are you going to be involved in the review of the ordinances before they go to vote? Or is that strictly gonna be the ten-person committee that was selected by other people?
Which ord, which ordinance?
The comprehensive plans changes to the ordinances, are we, does the planning board have a role in what gets presented to the public, or, do you know, Max?
So for the dispensary, which is, we currently have the mortuary report, that is something that the planning board will have to take up at some point. At least holding a public hearing for suggested changes, since, since it is a zoning issue.
Hmm.
There would also have to be a meeting to go over it. The intention from the select board is to remove it from the ordinance entirely, so that we are opting out. If you have any suggestive changes, this would be like the shoreline ordinance where you can take the suggestion, but do with it what you want. You can leave it in there, you could just make it stricter, it's up to you. For the caregivers, um, I do still need to talk to the select board about that because I, I'm not sure if the select board wants to have caregivers in the zoning ordinance, or if they wanna have an entirely separate ordinance regarding medical marijuana.
Okay, so we're talking about, there are two types of caregivers now. One is called a registered caregiver.
Yep.
And an unregistered caregiver.
Yep.
So we have to make that distinction, do you agree?
Yep.
Okay, good.
That has to be defined.
My concern is that, uh, we have a history that's very well documented in the legal process in this state, having to do with people that have gone to jail and people who have had to defend their property with a gun and get in trouble for doing it over the occupancy of a displaced that I'm referring to. And I, we received no, uh, satisfaction whatsoever up there regarding this. Except, there's nothing we can do to enforce the ordinance. So, um, now, I must clarify myself, I'm not against medical marijuana, by the way, not at all, I think it has its place. But I strongly recommend that this town maintain its home occupancy of operations for businesses. But as it stands right now, paragraph K covers this in great detail. And there are very key points in here, there's, there's a whole list of them, there are, let's see, eight. And if I were to look at this and go over it with someone, I would wonder how this happened if we had all of the issues we had in that neighborhood that I live in.
Cause there are more people employed than I, the people who live at the house?
I would, I would say that if you, if you were familiar with the, the industry called marijuana production, this would be called a, a grow op. And this facility over this time. And it was ongoing the whole time, we had speeding cars up and down the road all night. Many times, and it went on and on and on for years and years, a dirt road. And the house that I live in happens to be the original house in that, on that road, it was the founder's road of Flanders family. And it's right on the road and we had all kinds of other issues which we don't need to go into. However, they did involve out-of-state law enforcement as well. Yet I couldn't get anyone to do anything about it. And it, I am now concerned that this new regulation, regulated caregiver matter gets properly handled. Not by everybody south of Route One on that committee, but the people that are more involved directly in the rural part of North Waldenboro. Where it's, it's been earmarked in the community that we're a different part of the town, so we can do differently up there in terms of how we enforce and how we handle ordinances versus other parts. And so I am very strongly requesting that this committee, with your great integrity to try and make everything right, have some active role in working with all of those residents of South Waldenboro to, to make the environment more resident-friendly in North Waldenboro. Thank you.
Well, you, you said that we have integrity, but you basically accused us of treating North Waldenboro differently from the rest of Waldenboro.
Well, I didn't say your committee.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now, that's a good point though, you make a very good point. Where is the crossover between law enforcement and, uh, planning boards?
Well, is this operation illegal?
Yes.
So, isn't that a law enforcement issue then? I'm not, cause if, if it's in the.
It's, it's no, it's no longer in operation, correct?
That's correct, however, there, it could, could be any, any, uh, number of those places up in North Waldenboro, again, unless there is a proper consideration for this home occupation.
So if I can jump in, it's all right.
Please.
Good.
So the planning board is primarily for the, you saw four, four different people who came in and said, this is what we wanna do with our property.
Right.
For the post-handling, that's usually the code enforcement officer, Stan Walts, who is getting better, I'd like to.
Oh, good.
And code enforcement is also involved with home occupations as well. If someone does apply to be a home occupant, then, uh, they have to file site plan with Stan or the code enforcement officer and have it approved like that. To do, I think, three this past week. For that specific thing, I even think I spoke about it with, um, someone else recently. I would not put a registered caregiver as a home occupation, simply because of, as you said, the traffic. Especially depending on where in town it is and nuisance control and how it's.
Liability is in control.
Yeah, and how it, uh, relates to the building itself. You know, if it's someone who, like, the example you're listing that has multiple growers on site, that would not have been a home occupant. Because Barbara pointed it out, it's only allowed to be.
Right.
Two people who aren't related to you at most.
So that means it's a family with two employees?
Yep, it can only be that. Well, you can have as many family members, but once you go outside of your family tree, you only can have two.
That makes it a, uh, uh, a registered caregiver facility, as opposed to a caregiver facility which has no outside family.
Well, unregistered caregivers, people who just treat, who just grow for their own personal use, that's something that I don't think we have any real control over, cause it's.
But it's, there's, there are caregivers that provide their product to other family, that's considered a caregiver.
Registered caregiver, unregistered.
And a registered, unregistered, and a registered's one who prepares for others and, and has a license.
Yep.
To sell.
Yep.
And I am, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands there's a concern that, uh, North Waldenboro is going to be, uh, earmarked for.
Growth, or growing.
Right.
In terms of.
And I, and I would say that I think the whole town should be the same, first of all.
What do you mean earmarked for growing?
It's a crop of choice.
Yeah.
It's a farmer's crop of choice, because it's the only crop you can grow and make money.
Yep.
But once we let the market settle up, it'll be done. Cause the only, there's only so many gonna use it.
But it's, that's not particular to North Waldenboro, I mean, there's people growing.
Well, it could be the way, the way they're, the way that this could be prepared, registered caregivers should be, uh, according to the state blue law in December, is to give the towns the right to.
Regulate.
Regulate, and it's called home law, a home, home, uh, town rule.
Go ahead.
One of my frustrations my entire life is the lack of Congress is willing to commit themselves to any details in this whatsoever. Congress avoids the issue, they, they leave everybody hanging loose with federal laws that contradict what's done at the state level and it's a, it's a legal disaster.
We're talking about a little town in Maine.
I know.
That's in the state of Maine, not the federal government.
But the federal government has laws that, uh, let me, Ted, be applied here.
What Ted says I would also apply to the state, that that's the type of loophole that.
Yes.
Right. But, you know, but that, that said, I think too, for, for, for our purposes here, John, the, you know, our ordinance is, I mean, there are zones within Waldenboro, but outside of the zoning, the ordinances, the ordinance applies to the whole town.
I hope that remains that way.
Well, but, but I think, I think the issue with, but the issue of, the issue of where you are, any, for example, any farmer or any, like an artisan, artisans need low-cost studio space, so they're gonna concentrate where the old buildings are. You know, farmers looking for, you know, so North Waldenboro might be a place of choice for reasons, not because it's been singled out relative to being different on the ordinance, it's being singled out because it's a relatively, you know, a good place.
Could do something to the other branch.
Yeah.
Do something to the other branch.
Right.
I'll also just quickly point out, cause you were asking about. I'll also just quickly point out, because you were asking about the Planning Board being involved in the ten-person committee. The Planning Board, there's two things that the Planning Board will be involved in this process. The first one is that the Planning Board has two members who are supposed to be on the committee. One of them is Barbara. Hi, Barbara. And then one of them is Sarah, who I can't wave to tonight. They will be involved throughout the whole process, so, and not only they'll be communicating with the Planning Board, and I will give updates as well, but at the end of it all, the Planning Board does also need to hold a public hearing as well. And if you guys have any suggestions, you can also bring that up, whether it's Planning Board members or private citizens.
And does the Marijuana Committee have specific recommendations?
The Marijuana Committee, to my knowledge, has been disbanded since February, I believe.
But did, once it got a hold on applications, did they have, do they have specific recommendations?
For recreational. I don't recall what they had on medical, because I think their intent was to focus on the Waldenboro's decision on recreational marijuana.
I'm speaking about registered caregivers as in medical marijuana, and how it's been viewed. And I, I guess the crossover between law enforcement and, and an ordinance is, is really the heart of the issue. And.
Enforcement, and enforcement, right.
Yeah.
And I, so I, I just want to make sure, I'm making people aware, as you know, I already spoke at the Select Board meeting, when they voted in favor of having, getting rid of the current marijuana zoning that we have, with one dispensary and one cultivation on Route One. And that still has to be voted on.
Yep, that, the permanent language needs to be voted on.
And it conflicts with the current state opt-in, opt-out process?
So the reason why that's happening is because we can opt out of having the dispensary. However, when I spoke with the Maine Municipal Association, they recommended that they remove the, that we remove the language from the ordinance if we truly want to be an opt-out town. Because if we have that language in the ordinance, some people may get the impression that we willingly chose to be opt-in after this new law took effect. So that's why we're making this change, because the people will all go to decide whether we want to opt-in to allow this one medical dispensary, or if we want to not have it at all.
And that votes.
Which is different from registered caregivers.
Right, registered caregivers is a whole new deal. They came up in December in terms of how they turned it over to the towns to decide.
I'm so glad you brought this up. So what is Highbrow? Is it a registered caregiver?
Highbrow.
Yeah, we all would like to know.
I'd like to first off, point out that Highbrow was before me, so anything that happened is not my fault. Highbrow is a registered caregiver store. So what that means is, they sell whatever out in their front. They have a storefront. They have their hours.
THC and CVV.
Yep, and in the back office, they meet their patients. So they were approved for retail.
Approved for retail, and then the head of the Planning Board on that particular day, when there was a Select Board meeting, when the chairman of the Select Board asked the then-chairman of, head of the Planning Board, what is their intention? The answer was, only a gas glass shop. That's all it was given out, and.
That was the original comment.
On they went, and on it went, and I was in the middle of protesting that, as you can recall.
I, I recall that differently.
Were you here at the planning?
I was on the board when we approved Highbrow.
Right.
And my recollection was that it was a, as a medical caregiver for that, the number of patients that, that they had, which is limited, and a storefront for glass.
If you listen to the tapes on the January and the February 2017, you will hear exactly that he would not have opened that shop unless he was able to have a caregiver facility embedded in that building.
Well, yeah, and both, both were approved, and both were.
And then the question was asked at a Select Board meeting, what is the intention of that business in the first part of March, right after that meeting? And the answer was, only a glass shop.
Well, I can't, I can't vouch for that, but, but.
That's what started the whole disturbance.
Okay, well, regardless of that, what I'm saying is that that business was, you know, that was, my recollection, as you're saying, is that it was approved as a medical marijuana caregiver location in the back and a storefront, and that it met the, it met the land use ordinance. And it's similar to a lot of other things that would.
It doesn't meet the law.
Let Scott.
Excuse me.
It's commercial B, not A.
Let Scott talk.
It was approved based on our understanding of the land use ordinance, and that it met the requirements of the land use ordinance, because, because, you know, we had no basis to disapprove a medical marijuana caregiver at that point, based on the law, as we understood it. And we had no basis to oppose the glass shop. And it was a change of use of that site, but it was still a viable business before that. So, so there was no legal basis to refuse that application at that point. That's my recollection.
In my opinion, you're, what I'm hearing is exactly a popular comment that I've heard. On the other hand, there are others in this town that feel differently than, than this.
Well, there was no, there was, and if they did, there was no one there.
Because of the fact that it was run through as if it was only a glass shop, and it got its permit as strictly a, a retail glass shop.
No, well, I, I don't, I'm not, it's not clear to me what, whatever was said to the Select Board, the Select, the, the Planning Board approved that business.
Right.
At that point, I don't know that the Select Board had any purview over it all. So what was told to them, they, you know, wouldn't, would be moot. My point is, whether it was misrepresented to the Select Board.
I didn't come here to address this. I was trying to clarify the other opinion.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
Because there is more than one opinion about this, and we've never had a legal interpretation by an attorney on this subject.
So just very quickly, I want to throw something in. Ever since the new amendment, retail caregiver stores have been separated from a regular registered caregiver. So the next Highbrow wouldn't be allowed to come into Waldenboro, because we don't have that specific language in the ordinance that, funny enough. We were talking about whether we would have that in there. This is an example. The state law now says you have to include the words retail registered caregiver store, or else it's just not allowed.
So the handful that we have are here because they grandfathered in, but we can't approve another one.
Correct, correct.
Correct. If Highbrow was to walk in and say, we want to do an expansion, we can't do that.
Can't do it.
If Highbrow said, well, we want that second location over there, we can't do that.
Now, this Highbrow, do these patients, do they need a prescription?
Yeah, they need a state.
They need a medical, right, so they have that, so, so, you're right, legally, they can do that. I see patients all the time who need it for anything.
Five patients per caregiver, I think.
That was the original. Now, a registered caregiver can only have up to thirty mature plants for their total patients.
Yeah, it's a moving target, which makes our life more difficult.
It's forty, forty flowering plants and eighty immature plants.
Yep.
See, all these definitions, you, you don't pay attention for six months.
Well, we appreciate your, we appreciate your input and talking.
Well, I really am mostly interested in what I came up here to speak about, which was the due process we're going through in order to deal with the new state law, having to do with registered caregivers. And the potential, on our road, we have eight residents. I know of at least two that are growers in our area right now on that road. And there's nothing wrong with what they're doing, by the way, under the new laws, so don't misunderstand me, please.
Well, I think that's, I'm glad you said that, yeah, yeah, yeah. But, I mean, there's a big difference between that and, and how the business is operating, and the fact on the traffic of your road, or the people who are doing that, or whether they're doing something legally or not. Those are, you know, those aren't the same thing.
That's right.
Yeah.
I suspect at the very top level in American government, there are people making fortunes dealing with this product. And they really don't want it tied down so tight that they lose their markets.
Well, I mean, clearly, as.
It's all about the money.
Well, exactly, it's, I mean, and you made a good point about the farmers, because it's a valuable crop. And from a government perspective, they want the tax dollars, because it's free ta, they don't have to raise taxes on anybody. It's just, it's a whole new thing, so they can, they can tax it.
There's a lot of detail associated with what you have to do in terms of structures on your property, by the way, in order to be a viable grower, by the way.
Right.
And that's gonna affect all the land ordinances.
Right. Well, and our challenge is, because the land, land use ordinance has changed more slowly than a lot of other things.
Right.
And, and we haven't even caught up to food trucks, let alone catching up with this, so. Anyway, is there anything, anything else that we need to cover? Yes, please, Jim.
Just, just because this is, I wanted to understand this better. So if we continue with the opt-out for dispensaries, which are basically the warehouse growhouses, we won't have any in Waldenboro. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But that is.
Thank you.
The opt-out, opt-in just just accuses me.
That is assuming, hopefully in November, it is up to the Waldenboro people to say, remove it from the.
Perfect, got it.
Okay.
Now we can go.
So, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you.